The views and opinions expressed in this program are those of the participants and do not necessarily reflect the views of BronxNet or the program on the writers.
Good evening and welcome to Bronx Talk. Tonight, we present the debate for the special election in the 11th Council District, which includes the Bronx neighborhoods of Bedford Park, Kingsbridge, Riverdale, Norwood, Van Cortlandt Village, Wakefield, and Woodlawn. Tonight's program is presented in conjunction with the League of Women Voters, which is a nonpartisan political organization that advocates for informed and active participation in government and works to increase understanding of major public policy issues. Our other sponsors tonight are the Naleo Education Fund, Dominicanos USA, the James Baldwin Outdoor Learning Center, The Bronx Times, and the Riverdale Press. When former Councilmember Andrew Cohen was elected to a judgeship, this council seat became vacant, and the special election to replace him is on Tuesday, March 23rd, and all eligible voters are urged to vote. The early voting period is from March 13th to March 21st, and of course, for more information, go to vote.nyc. There are six candidates on the ballot in this race, and to their everlasting credit, they have appeared on numerous virtual forums throughout the communities to discuss their campaigns. On this televised debate, we've added a few features. In addition to traditional questioning, we'll have a lightning round, and then for the final 30 minutes of this 90-minute program, we'll give the candidates a chance to quiz each other. So let's meet the six candidates running for the special election in the 11th City Council District. They are former NYPD Police Detective Carlton Berkeley. Mr. Berkeley, so nice to have you with us.
Thank you for having me here.
A special education school teacher and Chair of Community Board 8's Aging Committee, it is Eric Dinowitz. Mr. Dinowitz, thank you for joining us.
Thanks for having us.
Climate activist and tech entrepreneur, it is Jessica Haller. Ms. Haller, nice to have you.
Thanks, Gary. Thanks for hosting.
A nonprofit executive and educator, Mino Laura. Ms. Laura, nice to have you with us.
Nice to be here. Thank you.
An attorney and Chair of the Community Board 8 Traffic and Transportation Committee and Vice Chair of the Land Use Committee, Dan Paternak. Mr. Paternak, nice to have you.
Good to be back on again, Gary.
Thank you. A freelance filmmaker and business owner, Kevin Pazmino.
Hi, Gary. Thanks for having me.
Nice to have you. Candidates, there are three parts to tonight's program: topical questions, a short lightning round, and then a chance, as I mentioned earlier, for candidates to quiz one another. Let's go through some of the rules for the audience. In the first section, I'll direct the question to one candidate. That candidate will respond. All responses will be limited to one minute. Candidates will receive 30- and 15-second verbal time warnings, and then each candidate will then get one minute to respond to the question before we proceed to the next question. There will be no opening statements, but at the end of the program, we'll give each candidate one minute to offer a concluding comment that will be delivered in the same order as the questioning. We should mention that the order has been selected at random prior to the program, and so by prior agreement, the first question goes to you, Mr. Dinowitz. Mr. Dinowitz, the DOE announced that high schools will be open for in-person learning this week. It's an important step forward. As schools reopen, if you are a city council member, what kinds of curriculum shifts, programmatic and testing adjustments, class size and school choice options would you advocate for to get our kids up to speed academically and emotionally?
Well, thank you, Gary. You know, very early on, I called for the closure of schools, back before we knew anything with the virus. Throughout this period, this very difficult period for our families and our children, I have been outspoken in my advocacy for what I believe needs to be done. And over the summer, in August, I called on the state to cancel the state exams. Besides the emotional pressure it places on our children, all of the class lengths, and the classes were all going to look different, some in person, some 30 minutes, some 40 minutes. And teachers need to plan.
30 seconds.
We need to know what our year looks like, okay? So we need to get our children, yes, back in school. I believe that we should not be giving those high-stakes tests to every children because it will measure nothing and cause undue pressure and stress on our children and our families. We need to be investing in in-person supports, safe in-person supports for our children in school, and yes, over the summer, and start planning now, now, for what September is going to look like for all students in New York City.
Thank you very much. Ms. Haller, we'll get the same question for you. What do you think? Education? What do we need to do now during this very unusual year?
I am thrilled that the kids are going back to school. My children are at a Jewish school that was able to pivot immediately and get the kids in school. We have models and data from a year of schools across the country that have successfully worked. I think that we need to, for high school students, we need to condense the amount of time so that there's less free time for kids in high schools, so that there's less risk of transmission. We need to create pods for them so that if there are any that are running around the school, and we need to reconfigure the schools a little bit so that the kids can be safer. But it is of utmost importance that they get back for their mental health and their academic health, and school can just move forward.
15. Great. Thank you very much. And Mr. Pazmino, next is you. What do you think?
Well, you know, I'm definitely very happy that the schools are back open. I know my daughter, my eldest, she's had a little convincing to do and whatnot. She wasn't too thrilled about it. But, you know, I mean, I think it's definitely great. I think obviously this year is, you know, as much as possible, getting them back into the swing of things. And, you know, but I think we should need to take the pressure off of this year and whatnot, and not really, it's almost got to be like a mulligan and whatnot. So, but in general, you know, when it's possible to have classes outside and try to make it fun, you know, bring funding back into education and whatnot. In general, I'm pro-for school choice, and I think that we should be able to give parents the choice to where their school, their children's go and whatnot, and whether or not it's the funding should go to the student. But in terms of this year and getting them back in, you know, obviously, you know, try to mitigate the size as much as possible, but just really just trying to get fund back into school and get kids, you know, happy to be back.
Great. Thank you very much. Ms. Laura, what do you think?
Yeah, so this is an opportunity for us to really reimagine what education should be and not what it is. We need to have culturally responsive education in our classrooms. So the curriculum needs to be adapted to meet the needs of our kids. 85% of our students in public schools are Latino and African-American. We need to make sure that our curriculum, as you spoke about curriculum shifts, adjusts to that, right? We're teaching about queer history. We're teaching about Latino history. We're teaching about Black history in this city, right? And then when it comes to the ratios, guidance counselors, right now, at 350 to 1. So we need to hire immediately more social workers and guidance counselors in our school who can meet the mental health needs of our students and the social-emotional needs of our students as we come back from this unbelievable year. And we do need to downsize classrooms, not only now because of the pandemic, but because it's the right thing to do so that teachers can differentiate the learning for all of their students.
Thank you very much. Let's talk education with Mr. Berkeley. What do you think?
Well, I'm glad that the schools, the schools are going to be reopened because I was one of the ones that said I was happy when they was closed because we didn't know what this pandemic was doing because, you know, with the president we had, you know, we got caught flat-footed with this. But I'm glad that the schools are reopening, but they need to be planning now, and they got to open safely. When it comes to our kids, listen, they're traumatic. You know, they went through a traumatic experience. This was a year that no one expected, no one ever saw coming. So I don't think a lot of pressure should be put on our kids now, all right? Also, I would love to sit down with the educators and the parents, all right? But mainly the educators to see what we can do for our kids.
15.
This was through no means of their own, but I'm glad that the schools are going to be open so that we can get back to some type of normalcy for our kids.
Thank you very much. Mr. Paternak, do you get the final word on this question?
Great. Thanks, Gary. You know, great question. I'm glad the schools are back. I'm sure the kids are happier than we are that schools are back. You know, not only are they, you know, getting behind in education, you know, with remote learning, but socially, you know, socially, this is very harmful to the kids as well. I think, you know, in terms of class size, this does offer an opportunity for us. It offers an opportunity for the city to now look at class size and reduce it. And I think in getting the kids back in and trying to figure it out, we now have, we could look at the space. So for me, I know I went to Public School 95, JHS 143. We need smaller class sizes. It's also another way to re-envision the districts. I think certain districts need to be smaller than what they are, and that's a citywide issue that we need to take a look at as well. Thanks, Gary.
The next question goes to Jessica Haller. Ms. Haller, you have made climate change a top priority, if not the top priority in your campaign. Sweeping climate change legislation, though, is going to have to come from the federal and state governments. So what can a city council member do to make a difference in the trajectory of climate change? And how do you balance your push for development with that commitment for fighting climate change?
Yeah, so we, New York City, we control our lives and the built environment and our ability to be resilient in the face of the climate crisis that's coming. New York City last year passed the single largest carbon reduction bill in the country, in Local Law 97. It was a model for everyone. That's the kind of work that we can do, and we can add people to that mix. And I also disagree. I don't have a push for development. I have a push for affordable housing. Affordable housing will make our communities richer, better, more resilient. It will help unravel segregation in schools. It will help us build equity and resilience and sustainability. Everything that the city does needs to come through a lens of sustainability. Will it withstand what is coming? Will what we are doing today compromise our future or not? In the crisis right now, we have the opportunity to re-envision our streets, to re-envision our built environment, to re-envision our relationship with energy and cars and air pollution. And those, all of them, are controlled by our city.
Thank you very much. Mr. Pazmino, let's talk climate change. What do you think?
You know, I try to be a little more hopeful about things. I don't necessarily think that we have, you know, nine years left and whatnot. I think that, you know, as much as possible, we need to, you know, focus on, you know, the basics and try to do community programs with recycling and trying to, you know, be good stewards of our home and take care of our neighborhoods and whatnot. So in terms of, you know, incorporating, you know, educational things where we have people, you know, volunteering to come out and clean up the streets and stuff like that. But I mean, I get, like you said, it is something that's more handled on the federal and state level. So, you know, hopefully, they do some good work in terms of regulating the types of vehicles that are bad and with emissions and whatnot. I definitely just am weary about what some people might want to do in terms of regulating, you know, and asking, having everybody, you know, live into smaller spaces, eliminating cars when, you know, they might still own a couple of cars and whatnot. So it's like, you know, regulating the lifestyles of everybody except for some of the elitists.
Thank you very much. Let's go to Mino Laura, same question, climate change.
Yeah, there's a lot we can do at the city level. Let's remember that we live in New York City. This is such a large city. So many of us live here, and we can make an impact and be a model for the state and federal, right? So we need to start a municipal jobs training. We need to transition to be absolutely net zero. To 2060, right, for solar, community power, as the state had is way too far away. We need to aim for much closer, 2030, 2040, to be, 2040, to be net zero. We need to retrofit our buildings, as Jessica said, Local Law 97. We need to make sure to be investing in that and putting our communities most impacted by the crisis of climate change to be in those jobs, to create prevailing wage jobs that we transition. Additionally, we need to subsidize tenants to go towards electric subsidies, electric utilities. And finally, we need to reinstate the funding for our Parks Department and our sanitation department because that is also an environmental justice issue.
Thank you very much. The next respondent to this will be you, Mr. Berkeley. Let's talk climate change, and how do you balance that with the need for development?
Okay, well, first of all, when you're talking about climate change, first of all, I believe in the scientists, all right? And we have to listen to them. We have to sit down with the experts, right? We already know that the Bronx has the highest rate of asthma, and that's been around forever. So we have to control our gases, whether the emission gases. We have to control our construction because the stuff we put in the air, right? It definitely affects us, and it affects our kids. Now, as far as being a councilman and about climate, I'm not an expert. But what I will do is I'll sit down with others, and we will sit down with the other experts and listen to what they have to say, and then we'll go by that and do that. That's what I would do.
Thank you very much. Next, Mr. Paternak, your thoughts on this issue?
Yeah, important topic, you know, as a city, what can we do? So, you know, as mentioned, Local Law 97, a bold new local law. However, what we really need from a city level is to make sure that there's proper implementation of the law and that the resources are there. I would not put that in the hands of DOB. I think we need a separate entity looking over the implementation of it. Number two, what we really need, you know, is to promote public-private partnerships to fund and finance a lot of the new projects that are green. They are expensive, they are new. We need financing available for that. Electric vehicles, green the fleets, absolutely. Again, financing for that as well. And then more important, you know, just try to change the culture out there, you know, within our communities, within our cities. Get the importance of this issue out there. And then looking at, you know, new buildings, new structures, development's important. Look to green building.
Thank you very much. And the final word on this will be for you, Mr. Dinowitz, your thoughts?
Thank you. So, you know, I asked, you know, what do we do here in the Northwest Bronx? And I believe infrastructure is part of that. So installing enhanced tree pits to help mitigate the impact of big storms so that our sewers don't overflow into our rivers, and providing financial incentives, not just to install green roofs on our current buildings, but to maintain them. We also need to daylight Tibbetts Brook. Those are some of my infrastructure priorities. I would push for charging stations throughout the city and bike parking at transit hubs so people can make those green choices. Now, I also, by the way, taught environmental science, and I did it by bringing students to the garden at the John F. Kennedy campus. And it was an incredible experience for them. For me, I believe that our younger students and older students need gardens in their schools. We need to invest in that type of education. We also need to move away from high-stakes tests in our high school to provide the breathing room and the room so that unions can come in and help provide apprenticeships for green jobs for our high school students.
Thank you very much. All right, let's move to the next question, and that will be for you, Mr. Pazmino. I was interested in the interview you gave to the Norwood News. I thought it was very interesting, and you opened up a little bit about your own background. You said that you had benefited from social service programs in the past, but nowadays, you say you don't support large nonprofits. So let's put this in current terms. Anyone who takes a subway right now will see that they are filled with homeless people and others who appear to be mentally challenged. In a city of more than 8.3 million people, nearly one in every 106 New Yorkers is homeless. That's nearly 80,000 men, women, and children. Every night, nearly 4,000 people sleep on the street in the subway system or other public spaces. If you are elected to the city council, how do you address this problem that has implications for so many aspects of life in the Bronx and the city?
Sure. I mean, I think in general, when it comes to, you know, the homeless situation, there's obviously different levels. Some people are homeless because of economic downturns and whatnot. So, you know, if it's a family that's, or of someone who's, you know, happens to be in a tough situation, that's not the city. You know, those people, we should put in shelters and something to help them get back on their feet quicker. Some people have mental issues. Some people have drug abuse issues. And so for, when it comes more towards the mental health stuff, I think we need to do like a, you know, build shelters that are like one-stop shops where they have, not just the shelter, but they have mental health services there. They have places where they can get the food there. Everything's all contained in one location so they can have, you know, everything they need, all their doctors there and whatnot. So it should be a shelter, like a facility, almost like a rehabilitation. Get them back on their feet and reintegrate into society. So I think instead of just having the shelter separate from all the doctors and everything else, I think everything should just be like kind of a one-stop shop at one location.
Thank you very much. Ms. Laura, let's talk with you about homelessness and the conditions in our subway system and the people who are really having a difficult time in the Bronx.
And, you know, most of our residents here in the Bronx are rent burdened. As you said, homelessness is a big crisis. And right now, we are in a time in our history where it'll exacerbate if we don't act on it immediately. First, we need to make sure that those that are in their home can stay in their home so we don't add to the numbers of those who are homeless and unsheltered. We need to make sure first to increase the voucher, the monthly vouchers, so that they meet the market rate. Right now, the vouchers don't meet the needs of what rent costs. And we need to make sure at the end, to make sure that there's more affordable units, units that are affordable for low-income New Yorkers to those coming out of the shelter system so that they can live in their homes and not have to rely on, you know, ever have to live without dignity and safety that comes with being unsheltered.
Thank you very much. Mr. Berkeley, it's a vexing problem and an important one. How would you deal with it if you were a city council member?
All right, you're right, and it's been around forever. And unfortunately, I feel that it's going to still be around a long time. You can't just take one councilman or a councilperson to fix the problem that's been around forever. But I tell you what you don't do. You don't saturate no area, one area, with all shelters and everything, right? And scatter sites, and that's exactly what happened where I live at in Wakefield, all right? We got three other shelters being built. And I'm not saying I'm not unsympathetic, all right? But we don't, you know, we need to make sure that these shelters that are being built, that some of these people get their medication because the shelters that I'm finding out over here, and the first one was the director was raped. The director was raped and shot in the head by one of the clients. And then when they built another one here, 47, 47, right? Some of the clients over there telling me they're not getting their medication. And a lot of times, we have homeless walk in the streets, and they're walking the streets because they haven't got their medication, you know, and then they wind up hurting others. So we don't saturate an area with them, and we do what we have to do. We make sure they get their medication and everything else, okay?
Do, I do appreciate it. Thank you. I know there's a lot to say. We probably do a whole program on just this issue because it has tentacles in just about every aspect of life. So, Mr. Paternak, I'm sure you have something to say about it.
Yeah, you know, a few years back on Community Board 8, our Health Committee looked at this issue within our community board, and we engaged with HRA. And HRA told, you know, they gave us the five leading causes. In Community Board 8, it was domestic violence as the number-one cause of homelessness in our community board. Number two is, you know, falling behind in rent and rent arrears. Yes, we need to support folks who fall behind, making sure that they stay in their homes with subsidies. You know, again, I keep saying through the pandemic, we need to bolster HRA, bolster the amount of money going to that agency to keep folks in their homes. As far as, you know, the homeless population, especially those who need supportive services, which is what we're talking about, I think we need to go to a group home approach. We need to make them, put them in smaller homes, address it as a mental health issue that it is, and get them the services that they need in smaller homes, not these large buildings saturated in one area. And I feel for the folks in Wakefield where most of these facilities are going.
Thank you very much. I guess we go to Mr. Dinowitz, sir. Again, like the others, I'm sure you have a lot to say in this.
Yeah, more than a minute's worth, but, you know. We all know there is a mental health crisis, and we know that it is painful in the city. But it always seems as though we address these problems after they become a crisis. One of the reasons I want our schools to move away from a high-stakes testing model is so that we have the room and the funding to engage in mental health education and social-emotional learning because the onset of so many mental health crises occur while our students are in school. And I think long term, that is something that we have to do to address the issues that we're going to confront in the future. Shorter term, yes, keeping people in their homes, expanding right to council, of course, of course, rental subsidies. And as we support our workers going back to work and the economy reopening, we have to make sure that union workers are supported, we're supporting prevailing wages so that people who are going back to work actually earn enough, earn enough money to pay the rent or pay their maintenance fees, pay the tax, whatever they have to pay.
10.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then the final word on this goes to Ms. Haller.
We often think about solving homelessness with shelters, but homelessness isn't a shelter issue. It's an issue with homes. I think we need to expand right to council and cost-effectively keep people in their homes. Homelessness is also a multivariate problem with many, many different things that contribute to it. So we know that right to council will keep people from falling out. We need to, for example, support LGBTQ teens because that's a whole other population of people that end up outside of their homes. And we need to tackle each one of them in its own way and fund it, fund it through the city in the way that we'll address it. And actually, one of the ideas is to look across the way we fund things. So if we are, if supporting LGBT youth helps with homelessness, we need to use that in analyzing how we're addressing these problems.
Thank you very much. Let's move to our next question, and that will go to you, Ms. Laura. Let's talk about social justice. Systemic racism infects every aspect of life in the Bronx, whether housing, healthcare, development, crime and policing, and business and economic development, and on and on. The issues are not only in the systems, but honestly, in the way people interact with each other on a daily basis, and you see it in social media as well. Unfortunately, there is evidence everywhere. So if you're elected to the city council, how do you go about establishing equal opportunities for all Bronxites and of course, specifically in the 11th City Council District?
Thank you for this question, Gary. Social justice is the work of lifting up all of us, making sure that all of us have the same opportunity to live with safety, with joy, and with dignity. So how do I do it? When we're looking at legislation, when we're looking at budgets, we need to make sure that we are prioritizing those that are most vulnerable. We need to make sure that we are investing in public hospitals. We are investing in housing that is accessible and affordable. We are investing in education that meets the needs of our students. Our schools are underfunded. Our housing stock isn't meeting the needs of those most vulnerable, and we need to expand workers' rights. So as I'm looking, and as we as District 11 are looking at legislation, I will be looking at it through a social justice lens, through an anti-racist lens, to make sure that we are lifting up those that most need government because that, I think, is the job of why we're here, to make sure that there is equal opportunity for all of us to be safe and to live with dignity.
Thank you very much. Mr. Berkeley, equal opportunities.
Well, yeah, well, you see, I've already been fighting all of those issues here, and I've been fighting them for a very, very long time. I think I'm the oldest candidate running. But like I said, I've been over here, and not just over here in Wakefield, all over the city. People have, wherever there was injustice done, people see me there, not just in Wakefield. But we have one of the most gravest injustices done in Wakefield when a young man, Ramali Graham, was shot and killed in his house, right? When the police went in there and didn't have a warrant or didn't have no business for being in there. But these are the issues that I've been fighting for ever since I've been in Wakefield, the last 30 years, all right? What will I do? I will go around the district and sit down and do my best and bring everyone together. Now, there's two parts, there's two parts of the district that more or less, they don't have those issues. And that's more or less that I think that's Riverdale and Woodlawn. They don't have the same issues as the other five parts of the district. But I'll do my best, and I'll go around and meet with everybody in every area of the district.
Thank you very much, Mr. Paternak.
Yeah, it's, listen, like you, Gary, I'm from the Bronx. You know, we grew up here. We know the issues, we know the folks. So when it comes to, you know, equal opportunity for all, it's being out there, it's understanding the neighborhoods, it's understanding the needs. One of the reasons I became a lawyer was so that I could help people. I love the ability to walk into any courtroom and advocate for somebody who needs help. So we do it through the law, we craft laws where needed, and then we do it through the budget as city council members. And we stand up for folks. When we see something, we stand up for it. And for me, that's something that we know, being neighborhood guys. And for me, equal opportunity for all is an extremely important thing. Thanks, Gary.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dinowitz, your thoughts on social justice?
No, I see, you know, I see it or I saw it in the schools when students would come to tears because they didn't see themselves in the curriculum. And when I saw symbols of hate in my school, I conducted with a couple colleagues anti racist training in the schools. It also means we have to be supporting union work, right? And workers' rights, right? Things that have historically uplifted communities of color and marginalized communities. And I'm very proud to have the endorsement of thirty two BJ, DC thirty seven, the United Federation of Teachers, the Central Labor Council, all of whom uplift our typically marginalized communities. And we have to go in with that lens, knowing the struggles.
Fifteen.
Thank you. The struggles that so many people go through here in the Northwest Bronx throughout our city. And with that support, going into the council.
Thank you very much. Ms. Haller, I'm sure it's something you've thought about.
Yeah, I launched my campaign last year in January on a platform of equity first, resilience and sustainability. And then within weeks, we ran into crises of equity, resilience and sustainability. It's been there all along. A hundred years ago during the flu pandemic, communities with poor air quality died of the flu at higher rates. And yet we have chosen in this borough to keep infrastructure in communities of color and low income communities. And then are surprised that they're dying of COVID at higher rates. I want to measure everything we do and everything that comes out of the council from any regulation to the budget, equity first. The measurement has to be, how does this affect people by income level, by race, by geography? So that at the end of the day, this council will have equitable distribution of resources that will begin to unravel the systemic racism that we've been living with for so long.
Thank you very much. The final word on this will be for you, Mr. Pazmino. I'm sure equality is something that's important to you.
No, it definitely is something that's very important to me. I'm definitely also a little more hopeful on the outlook on the situation, like walking through the various neighborhoods. You know, I've spoken to a lot of different people of all sorts of nationalities. And, you know, when I approached them, everybody's very amicable to me and very, you know, open arms and whatnot. And we've had a lot of good conversations. So I think the people of the Bronx are genuinely not, you know, they're not racist. I think that in general, you know, we need to fix a lot of the societal problems, you know, in terms of, you know, going back to traditional values, sense of community. So, you know, giving activities for children to do and kids, teenagers to do. So, you know, more community programs, more faith based programs, just a lot more opportunities for people, like wholesome activities to do. I think our culture has grown up, you know, I was born in nineteen eighty and our culture was always, you know, when we want to relax, we kick back and drink beers and whatnot and just drink. So I think we need to move away from sustenance and start going back to more of a wholesome environment.
Thank you very much. Let's move ahead and go to Carlton Berkeley. Mr. Berkeley, you are a retired NYPD detective and I think we all appreciate your work and working for the department. So let's talk about crime and policing. This week, the NYPD released six years of disciplinary records on all thirty five thousand active police officers, which many see as a good first step toward transparency. So let's be transparent here. Do you think Police Commissioner Dermot Shea is doing a good job? What does the NYPD do well? And what reforms would you advocate for if you are a city council member?
All right, you asked a series of questions. Well, so far, I think Mr. Dermon is doing the best he can. Have I worked with other commissioners? Yes. All right. Now, as far as being transparent, I'm one of the ones that's been fighting for years. I joined the police back in nineteen eighty four. And I was fighting for police officers' records to be put in the public because, right? I was working with criminals as they were police officers. I saw some of the things that were going on. So I was one of the first ones to fight for fifty eight. All right, with Senator Bailey, right? So I'm happy about that now. Do I blame, let me just say this emphatically, ninety to ninety five percent of all the police officers out there are good, hardworking men and women that want to do a good day's work. But there are some bad ones out there and we need to root them out. The blue wall of silence still exists and we need to knock it down. What happened to George Floyd was a conscious decision made by that police officer. And that's what's been happening. And we need accountability. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Cut out, but the word you said was accountability, right?
Right, we need accountability.
Fair enough. Mr. Paternect, let's talk about the NYPD and policing in the city of New York.
Sure, you know, I've worked with the local police department for the last twelve years on numerous issues. You know, I think we do need greater transparency. I'm glad to see that the records have come out for the last six years. And I think we need more, Carlton said it right, you know, accountability, more accountability. And we need to see what the department's doing. Some reforms that I would advocate for, you know, raise the age of police officers. You know, we have a lot of patrol officers who are between the age of twenty one and twenty five. That's a young age to have such a great responsibility. I would increase the amount of training for our officers. I would like to see the academy be longer. I would like to see greater weapons training. I would like to see more training and de-escalation. I would like to also see more training in addressing those with mental health issues. What does the NYPD do? They are always there. Whenever something happens, they are there.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Gary.
You had a few seconds.
Oh, okay.
I said fifteen, so we'll give you fifteen more seconds if you'd like.
Thank you. So what I was saying is that the NYPD is always there. And, you know, for us, it's increasing the communication and working together, community and NYPD to bridge the gap. Because right now there is a gap and we need, you know, as council members, as community, to work together with our police department.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Mr. Dinowitz, what are your thoughts?
Yeah. The release of the police misconduct records was due to the repeal of fifty A, which I was very early on a supporter of. And it was in the Senate that that was, the person in the Senate who pushed for that repeal was Senator Jamal Bailey. I am so proud to have his endorsement in this race. There are a number of reforms we can make here in the city. One of those deals with the responsibilities of the NYPD. Right? Shifting some of those nonviolent mental health responsibilities, shifting some of the responsibilities they now have, now have dealing with food cart vendors. We need to be shifted to people who are better able to, better equipped to handle it. And we also, in the city, I want to give the CCRB more authority and remove some of those appointments from the mayor and the commissioner so that it is truly independent and that they have authority to act when a police officer, when police officers do something, anything involving misconduct.
Thank you very much. Let's move now to Jessica Haller, NYPD, crime and policing. What do you think?
You started the question with, is Shea doing a good job? I do not think he is. The DOI report that came out after the summer riots and rallies in New York to see what went wrong. The most eye opening thing to me is the fact that our NYPD does not know how to protect the First Amendment. That is, that is almost criminal in my mind. The NYPD needs cultural training. It needs resources to be able to train people on protecting the First Amendment. Diversity training, it needs sensitivity training. And in order to do that and give them the resources they need to focus, we need to pull away all sorts of other responsibilities that are clouding that. We need to demilitarize our police department and end the ten thirty three program and not allow them to purchase militarized weapons that bolster them and give them sort of more cultural problems. And I would also end by saying that the communities always ask for more police. That is the one consistent question is that people ask for more because they want the safety.
Fair enough. Thank you very much. Let's go to Mr. Pazmino, your thoughts about the NYPD and our police force?
Well, I mean, I think accountability is always, you know, as management, it's always from the top. So I think the mayor and the commissioner need to step up. And when something happens, they need to hold from commenting until they actually see exactly the details of each situation before they start demonizing the police and whatnot. I think the police department, you know, I think like Carlton had mentioned earlier, you know, nobody hates a bad cop as much as a good cop because they just give everybody else a bad name. I think I'm a big fan of the body cameras because they really tell the story of what's really going on in the moment. I think that, you know, police officers have a really tough job, that they bear witness to some of society's biggest tragedies. So I think we need to reconsider maybe, you know, shortening the amount of time that they're on the street. I think we need to increase funds for mental health for police officers because one therapist for five hundred officers is just not enough. And, you know, I'm definitely for programs that, you know, longer periods of time in the academy and programs that incorporate a union between the police and the community.
Thank you very much. Ms. Laura, you get the final word on the question about the NYPD.
First Commissioner Shea should be fired or he should resign. He brutalized protesters last year. He, when it comes to the CCRB, it needs to be independent. It can't just be appointed by the mayor. City council should have appointments, community boards across the district should have appointments and who goes there. Right now, the Commissioner Shea and the whole NYPD, they took into account about half of the things that came up with police brutality and accounts of violence. We need to make sure that the NYPD is right sized. We do not need more police, but we do need more healthcare workers. We do need more social workers. And NYPD has been telling us this, they are not equipped to handle certain petitions. Carlton has spoken about that. We need to make sure that the NYPD is focused on preventing and solving crime. And that's exactly what the defund movement across the city is saying that I support. Need to reallocate funds to other city agencies, to Department of Education, to Department of Transportation. When I have a bumper to bumper, I don't need a cop to be with me for two hours. They need to focus on keeping us safe. And public safety is not the sole responsibility of the NYPD. It's a responsibility of all of us as a city and every single city agency.
Thank you very much. This dialogue certainly has been inspiring. And I have to say, I'm quite impressed having moderated so many of these with the quality of all the candidates here. The final question for our first round in this program will go to you, Mr. Paternect. Let's talk about your neighborhood. You cast yourself as a neighborhood candidate. So let's talk about the Jerome Park Reservoir. Jerome Park Reservoir was built in nineteen oh five to help distribute water to the Bronx and provide an additional source of water storage. It's on the National Register of Historic Places, abuts five neighborhoods in the eleventh council district. Yet despite decades long efforts by communities to partner with the DEP over the use and maintenance of the reservoir, including a much desired public access program, the DEP essentially operates on its own. In fact, despite an apparent agreement over the filling of the reservoir's North Basin just a year ago, as we sit here tonight, it's empty again. If you're elected to the city council, what could you do to get the department to work closer with community groups and advocates in the use and care of the reservoir? And finally, get a public access program going at the reservoir?
I'd bring you and Karen Argenti to meet the Commissioner of DEP to start with.
I'm out of there. I'm not running for city council.
So what I would do as a city council member, and you know, look, as former Chair of the Crowe Infiltration Monitoring Committee and being on that committee for three years, you know, we work together. And I know you know about this and we're part of the effort to get two open access weekends within the reservoir. I want to see more access, you know, to the reservoir. I want to see more students in there. I want to see the public in there. I run the reservoir several times each week. I love it there. It's a great resource for cities. So what would I do? I would use my influence as a council member to open that dialogue back up with DEP to figure out what the restraints are. You know, they generally say it comes back to security. But the truth is, you and I know that I could stand on the mound in Ford Independence Park and throw anything I want in the Jerome Park Reservoir. So I really want to open up that conversation, bring it to a public hearing and try to get more access to the reservoir any way I can.
Thank you very much. Sure, thank you. Mr. Dinowitz?
Thank you. As a council member, what I will do is what I've already done as a community member. And that is build broad coalitions of support and bring everyone together and advocate for the needs of the community, of the people in the Northwest Bronx. I did this when I advocated for an elevator on the Marshall Parkway, on the Port train. Right? Bringing together elected leaders, community leaders, residents, right? Signature drives, testify in MTA meetings. I did this when I stood by union workers at Key Foothill, stood by, worked with them, worked with the union, communicated with community groups and brought people together. And that's reflected in the type of campaign I'm running and the number of unions and elected officials who are supporting me. And that's what I would do in this instance. Use my abilities to bring people together, build broad coalitions in order to get done what the community needs to get done.
Thank you very much. Ms. Haller, it's in the middle of the district. Everybody knows it, yet it's fenced off from everybody. What do you think?
Gary, a good solution solves multiple problems at once. If it's just a security question or just a parks issue or just a DEP issue or just about the water or just about the tile, the stone on the wall, that's not how we're going to solve it. What we're going to do is we're going to say, water in that reservoir makes it beautiful, helps us with the heat island effect, makes us more resilient. Opening it up to people increases equity because it gives people from all the five different neighborhoods that access to this resource that really could be beautiful. So what I would do is I would bring the agencies together and show them that there is synergies by supporting these plans. And it could have a spiraling, a positive spiraling effect on the neighborhoods, on the feature in the city, on the infrastructure and an overall long term positive effect.
Thank you very much. Mr. Pazmino, it's on the National Register of Historic Places, yet the people of the Bronx kept it arms distance. What are your thoughts?
I think, you know, it's important that we talk to all of the agencies involved and be surgical about it. You know, you find out exactly what the issues are and then, you know, and find solutions for what the issues are. And at the same time, once we know if it's a security thing, then we increase the patrols around it when it's open. And then it's also educating, knowing what the issues are from the agencies, but then also educating the public to those concerns. So that way an informed public can know, okay, now we're worried about security, people putting things in. So people are more vigilant when they're, you know, having access to it and whatnot. And they can also, you know, if they see something, say something. If it's whatever the issue is, depending on the agencies involved, handling the situation surgically and informing the public.
Thank you very much. Ms. Laura, your thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, let's be clear, there's a reservoir in Central Park and that's open to the public. Manhattan seems to be able to do it, but somehow the Bronx can't or we wouldn't be safe enough. So let's just see what that is saying and refuse it, refuse to accept it. Our community members have been fighting for it. We are able to be safe. We deserve to have this space. We deserve to have access to the Jerome Park Reservoir, to this beauty and to this health and public space. So we need to be very clear on understanding the why and also calling it out for what it is. Fences, we do not, we do not need fences in the Bronx. We need access and open spaces. So let's talk about solutions. Right now, it's just about barriers. We need to be building, yes, working with DEP and also organizing. I've been organizing my whole life, bringing coalitions. Let's make sure to do that and create as councilperson and grassroots organizations and neighbors marches and rallies. And let's storm down until we're able to get what we need and the respect that we need right here in the Bronx.
Thank you very much. Final word on this about the Jerome Park Reservoir will be with you, Mr. Berkeley.
Oh, to tell you the truth about the reservoir, right? I thought that they were always doing construction over there. I didn't know it was a security issue. All right, but it seems, I haven't been there, all right, in a very, very long, long, long time. That issue doesn't come up in Wakefield because I guess the people over here don't really go visit it. But it sounds like it would be a really nice place to be at and for people, you know, for groups to, you know, to get to mingle there. I would like to bring the kids there, especially kids from the other neighborhoods, you know, so that they can go over there and see, you know, how it is. Because I believe the kids over here haven't even gone over there. But I would, like I said, I thought it was construction all of this time. But if it's in the public, it should be open to the public, just like Central Park Reservoir is.
Well, then I'll just add my own comment because I live right near the reservoir. I'll invite you over. I'll take you around. You get to see exactly what it is. There's a lot here that could be done. And I thank all the candidates for weighing in on it. Our candidates, let's take a deep breath and have our lightning round here. And just, we'll ask you to just be brief, one or two words should pretty much answer it. And we'll go in the same order that we went throughout. So that first whack at this and everybody will get a chance and we'll use the same rotation that we had. So for all of you, but to start, Mr. Dinowitz, who is your most inspirational historic figure? And please maybe one sentence as to why you select that person.
Oh, gosh, this isn't a lightning round question. Most inspirational historical figure?
Do you want us to get back to you?
Yeah, yeah, that's a tough, that is a toughie. Thank you.
All right, we'll give you a chance now. So Ms. Haller?
I know we each have one during the debate, so that'll be my one.
Ms. Haller, your thoughts on historic figure?
And so I don't want to, I don't want to make it seem that she's far back in history, but Ruth Messinger is both one of my mentors and someone I remember when I was growing up in Manhattan. Is someone that I looked up to and who broke barriers for women for social justice. And then I grew up and was able to have her as a mentor. So it's fantastic.
Mr. Pazmino?
Definitely Martin Luther King Jr., you know, judging someone by the character of their, you know, by their character, not by the color of their skin, that, you know, something for me, you know, as a person of color growing up, you know, I really took that and, you know, strove to make sure that, you know, I could be a good person and be a good example for, you know, the younger generations and whatnot. So definitely MLK Jr.
Thank you, Ms. Laura.
One is Harriet Tubman. My daughter learned about her in kindergarten. And I was so glad that she got to know this amazing figure. I love resilient, strong, powerful women that defy the odds. Harriet Tubman is a historical character that I admire, love and teach to my children every day.
Mr. Berkeley?
Well, it's a couple, but I like Martin and I like Malcolm. But since But since past pick, Martin, I'll go, I'll go with Malcolm. And the reason why I go with Malcolm is because he was all about, you know, us pulling ourselves up our bootstraps. And you know what? As a people, we can, we can do that. So I'd say Malcolm X.
Mr. Paternak, you have a picture of JFK over your shoulder. I don't know if you're going there, but what do you think?
I am, I am going to go there in a minute, but I will say, I did a paper on Harriet Tubman when I was in grammar school. Good call. But definitely JFK for me. He was just so inspirational. You know, he really brought out a lot of caring for those needy, and, you know, he just inspired hope within the entire nation, and he would be the person.
Did Mr. Dinowitz get his bearings at this point? What do you think?
More or less. There are some good historical figures here, of course, MLK, Harriet Tubman. You know, Gary, you and I were talking before about Stan Lee. And while he's not typically considered a historical figure, often in my classroom, I would teach a lot of concepts, not just science, but inclusion and acceptance, and through comic books, because that was how I was able to connect with students, especially students with reading disabilities. And I think, I think his stories through the comics really inspired a lot of my students and allowed those connections to take place.
I think that will, that will please those of us who went to do with Clinton High School, like me, we appreciate that. All right, this one will be a lot quicker, so let's go around. Who do you support for mayor? Jessica Haller?
I'm going to reserve judgment until after our election and then dive right in.
All right, we'll find out. Mr. Pasmino?
Ooh. There's two people that I really like. I really like Bill Burton, and I really like Fernando Mateo. So those are, those are my two top, top picks.
Okay, Ms. Laura?
I love that there's ranked choice, because we don't have to choose just one. And I'm still looking, I'm still learning. I love Diane Morales, I love Maya Wiley, Scott Stringer, Sean Donovan in a recent debate also impressed me, so I'm still looking and learning, but right now, those are standing out.
I hope that was the debate that we had here on BronxNet, but I won't, that's not part of, that's not part of our, our lightning round. Mr. Berkeley?
My good friend Eric Adams. That's who I, that's who I'm supporting for mayor.
There's a NYPD bond there that you probably can't break. Mr. Paternak, your thought?
I like Catherine Garcia. She's got a great amount of experience, and I like her a lot for mayor.
Eric Dinowitz?
I have not yet endorsed in the race.
All right, well, stay tuned for that, I suppose. All right, the next question, and the first whack will go to Mr. Pasmino. What is your favorite place to go in the 11th Council District that does not cost money?
Ooh.
You know, we could do restaurants and all that, but we want places that people could just go.
Sure, sure, of course. I mean, you know, Vidmont Park is so close to me, but, and the kids love it. I have so many memories of pushing my children on the swings there, but definitely Van Cortlandt Park. I mean, it's a staple in District 11, and, you know, you have parties there sometimes as well, but, so yeah, I'd say Van Cortlandt Park.
Ms. Laura?
So I have children, I have two kids, and this summer during the pandemic, fairies came into my life, and hiking, hiking in the forest and the open space we have, either at Riverdale Forest or at Van Cortlandt is free and amazing.
There you go. Mr. Berkeley?
I just like going around the neighborhoods and just walking and just looking at all the neighborhoods. It's free, and, you know, it's knowledgeable, and you get to see just new people and what they do and how they live.
All right, Mr. Paternak, aside from running around the Jerome Park Reservoir, which we've already done.
I would say Van Cortlandt Park, and you know, it's kind of cheating giving that answer, because there's like 10 different places that I can name in Van Cortlandt Park, because it's so huge, but that's where I would go.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Dinowitz.
I love taking my kids to Van Cortlandt Park on Maschallou Avenue, big open space, it's a playground, the community gardens there, and lots of great memories of my twins there, and love taking them there.
All right, and let's see, Ms. Haller, your thought?
Yeah, the forest of Riverdale Park, where I've been for 10 years, taking students in and introducing them to nature. We've seen eagles, owls, snakes, and we've seen amazing things, and anyone could just go.
Let's do one more real quick. We want to leave enough time for our question segment between the candidates. So let's see, this first one will go to Ms. Laura. If you are not elected to the council in this election, will you enter the ring for the primary in June?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Berkeley?
Yes.
All right, I think voters are starting to get a clue as to what we're in for in June. Mr. Paternak?
Yes, we're doing petitions now.
Well, there you go. Mr. Dinowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Haller?
It depends.
Uh huh.
And I'm happy delivering.
All right. If we had more time, then I would ask you exactly on what, but we'll let that go for the moment. Mr. Pasmino?
Well, I don't think I'm going to have the primary, but I'll be on the Republican and Conservative lines in November.
All right, that's an honest enough answer. Folks, we could do this all night long, but we're going to take a short break, get everybody a chance to take a deep breath. When we come back, the candidates will ask each other a question. Don't go away. You're watching the debate for the special election in the 11th City Council District on BronxNet.
We know that people are dealing with the health crisis, but there's also a lot of food insecurity.
We're giving out healthy food options, and that's what's key here.
If you're a senior, you have a disability, they'll actually deliver meals to you.
The residents are anxious, they're worried, they're scared, they want to be tested.
When things were happening in our community, and we couldn't get the help.
There's almost a presumption of criminality that attaches to your skin color.
The site will prioritize those who are at highest risk in the population.
If you feel symptoms and you'd like to visit one of these COVID-19 testing sites here in the Bronx, you may call the state health department's hotline.
Important to note about this site is no reservations are needed. This is a walk-in clinic.
A lot of us are out of work and looking for something to do.
We have the machinery and the skills to make large scale of these masks and gowns.
Take care of your people. It's going to go way further than we actually can understand.
Right now, employees like myself are just adjusting.
To the new reality.
Welcome back to the debate for the special election in the 11th City Council District on BronxNet. Candidates in this section of the program will give each of you a chance to direct a question to an opponent of your choice. The way we'll do it, very simply, the opponent can offer a one-minute response, and then the two candidates can have a two minutes back and forth as necessary. Maybe I'll weigh in as well. If other candidates want to weigh in, if there is time within those two minutes, just raise your hand, and we'll try and recognize you if there's time. And so according to our order, the first question will be asked by Carlton Berkeley. Let us know who you're going to direct your question to and proceed.
Okay, well, this is a question I could have asked anybody, but I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask Eric, all right? Now, Eric, I have, I think I've only seen you really one time with your father at a Wakefield taxpayers' meeting. And my question to you is, when we had the Ramali Graham killing by, by a police officer who had no right to run in his house, when we had, we had these shelters, we had the director of the shelter raped and shot, killed, and everything, we have so many shelters over here in Wakefield. I just wanted to know, how come I haven't seen you more often around here? And when things like that happen, I think that we need to see each other. I mean, all of you guys are good candidates, all of you, but until this debate here, until we're running from office, I have never seen any of you in the area over here in Wakefield or any of the other areas when there's a lot of...
Let's give him a, let's give him a moment to answer that. Mr. Dinowitz, go ahead.
That was for me, right?
Yes, it was.
Yeah, okay. So Carlton, yes, there are serious issues particularly regarding shelters in Wakefield. And just regarding Wakefield, I've been to a number of Wakefield meetings beyond the one that you may have seen me at, Community Board 12 meetings, right? And even just today, I was in Wakefield today, knocking doors, saying hi to the folks in the neighborhood, right? But I will be a councilman for the entire district. And all you have to do to know that that is a fact, that that's the case, is look at the work I've done. Like, yeah, I grew up in Kingsbridge Heights, Kingsbridge, Riverdale. I worked at a school in Kingsbridge and Marble Hill, and a school in Kingsbridge Heights, fought for accessibility in Norwood.
Thirty seconds.
And when I bring my kids around to Parks Club, I bring them to Bissell Gardens, right? So I will be a councilman for the entire district, and you don't have to take my word for it, you could just look at the work I've done throughout my entire career.
Thank you very much. We do have time, Mr. Berkeley, if you want to follow up at all?
Yeah, what I wanted to ask is, I'm saying, when, when the other serious issues, where there's shootings, the robberies, and things like that, I'm saying, why haven't you come around, you know, being a district leader, right? Why haven't you come around the area, you know, when things like that happen, whether it's 12 o'clock, midnight, 2 o'clock in the morning? Because, see, that's what I get. I get waking up, right? When something happens and people say, hey, Chucky, we need you out here, whether it's 3 or 4 o'clock in the morning, are you? And that's what I've been doing. And I'm saying, why haven't you been doing that?
Let's give him a chance to answer, and then Ms. Haller will fit you in before we go to the next question.
First, I was, I deeply admire your commitment to your neighbors and your community. I want to make that very clear. But again, the truth is, I have been around Wakefield, but there are issues beyond, and, you know, these are awful, terrible things, shootings, the amount of homeless shelters and the violence, but there are other issues too that families call me about and talk to me about. They talk to me about the schools. They talk to me about speeding along their narrow streets. They talk to me about the small businesses. There's a lot more that families and people are reaching out to me about.
Thank you very much. Ms. Haller, you can take about 30 seconds. Why don't you do that?
Carlton, I want to just respond through faith that you and I have talked about before. There's some beautiful things that happen, albeit on the western side of the district, but not necessarily related to the council district. When terrible things in the world happen, when there was a shooting in Christchurch at a mosque, when there was a terrible murder in Pittsburgh at a synagogue, all of the people of faith come together. They happen to come together at a monument in Riverdale, again and again, representatives from the different houses. And I would love that you should connect to that.
Jessica, thank you. Okay, great. Let's go to the next question. Mr. Paternak, you can select someone to ask a question to. Thank you.
Yeah, you know, I've got a question for Eric, you know, kind of piggybacking on what he just answered with Carlton. So Eric, you know, we're both on the board. I've been on the board, I'd say, much longer than you have. So I know your experience with the committees, and I'd say you and I have a different level of experience. You know, even this year, you know, I'm on five committees, you're on two. I think the more important thing, and what I'm hearing out there, though, is what people want to know, how do you distinguish your initiatives, the things that you're actually pushing for from your dad, who is a local assemblyman? How do people distinguish you? I mean, are there any initiatives that you've worked on yourself without your dad being involved or any of the elected officials being involved?
Yeah.
Mr. Dinowitz, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that question, and yes, I do chair the Aging Committee on Bronx Community Board 8. And yes, I've been active in the community. And let me just make clear for everyone that I am very proud of the work that my father does in the community, has done for millions and millions of New Yorkers, and also my mother, who instilled a lot of values of community service, right? I went in the class, when I was 21, I became a public school special education teacher in our community. And every day, I went in the classroom, and my students didn't care who my father was. It didn't matter to them who my father was. It mattered that they had someone there fighting for them, being there for them in the classroom, right? When the union workers at Key Food were fired for being in a union, what was important to them was they had a brother in labor standing side by side with them. That's the work that I do. My advocacy is for people. Sometimes my father and my work is going to align, and sometimes it won't. I advocated for, I ran as a delegate for Elizabeth Warren for president. He ran for Joe Biden. Our paths diverged because we disagreed on that. You know, we disagree on high-stakes testing in our schools. And I've advocated for the cancellation of high-stakes testing even this past summer because I see the impact it has on schools, on our children, on our principals, administrators, and on teachers.
Thank you. Mr. Paternak?
Can I respond right now?
Yes, of course.
Oh, yes, I respond right now. So regarding you being a teacher, you know, it's an admirable profession. I get that, but that's different than what I'm asking right now. My profession is an attorney, and even as an attorney, I do a lot of pro bono work outside of that, which I don't get paid for. But, you know, you listed two initiatives here. You know, the first one you said was the Fort Train. I mean, your dad was the head of the Public Authorities Committee at the time. So that initiative, I think, most people saw as really your dad and the other electeds who coalesced around it. The other one you said was the Key Food. I know your dad was kind of in front of that issue. What I'm looking for...
Let's ask it, so he, we have time for his answer. Go ahead.
Yeah, what did you lead the charge on yourself?
So just to hear whatever you're hearing about things, the reality is, I formed a coalition of elected leaders, of business leaders around the Fort Train, elected leaders, business leaders, community leaders. I spearheaded that by collecting 2,000, over 2,000 signatures from community members. I went down to the MTA meeting and testified for accessibility. I went down to another MTA meeting and spoke of the need for accessibility. And guess what? The MTA came back a year later and said they're going to install elevators. And you can, of course, it's very easy, may I finish, please? Thank you so much. It is, it is very easy to say.
This will be the last response, and we're going to the next question. Go ahead.
Look, again, I'm proud of my father. He's an elected official. He's going to have an opinion, and in one way or another, have something to say or be involved in community issues. But you brought up the train. That was my project, right?
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay. So I'll note the train. Am I responding?
Sorry, no, we've got to move on. There are other candidates. So it's Mr. Dinowitz's chance to ask a question.
Sure.
So pick a candidate and ask away.
I'll just, well, Dan, I'll ask you, you know.
Go back, keep going.
Let's keep going.
No, I mean, no, I just, you know, I admire your service on the board for 12 years. I'm interested to know how you feel about term limits for board members.
Yeah. It's interesting, because, you know, we did have this conversation back on our board, and I remember when I first, I think when I first spoke on it, I think I was against the term limits for board members. The truth is, you know, hearing more, seeing more, I think I'm okay with term limits. And the truth is, I am completely supportive of term limits for all elected positions in city, state, and federal government. I support term limits. I think it's better for government in general. I think, I like to see turnover. You know, as board chair, we have this unwritten rule that after three years, you step down, and that's so that there's a new voice. There's new people in charge. You know, I'm looking forward, again, to new faces coming into the community board as well, and I do support it.
Thank you. Did you want to follow up, Mr. Dinowitz?
No, I really just wanted his opinion on it.
Term limits? Yeah, I completely supported it at all levels of government, and at first I was resistant, and we will lose voices like Chuck Murdler. And at first, I was resistant, and we will lose voices like Chuck Murdler.
Or even your own voice.
Even my own, even my own. But I think in all, it's better for government and better for community.
Ms. Haller, your chance to ask a question to one of the candidates.
Yes, I know we're giving him a lot of airtime, but Eric Dinowitz, for years, as a district leader, you publicly supported Jeff Klein, '14, 2018. And now your campaign is saying that you worked against the IDC, which, to remind everybody, fought against Health Act, against climate change legislation, against New York healthcare. Senator Biagi actually recently called you out on this. Can you give us a straight answer now? Did you or did you not support Jeff Klein? And how can voters trust anything that you say about your record if this is how you've been framing those interactions?
Yeah, so my statement did not say that I supported the IDC. Just to be very clear, that statement that you just made is not true. You can look at my statements. It does not say I supported the IDC. I want to be clear because there is some confusion. Yes, I supported Jeff Klein in 2018. All right? But you all--
And 2014, just point out the race.
I actually didn't make any endorsement in either race. And that's the 2014 race that you didn't vote in, of course. But to be clear, again, yes, I voted for him, right? And there were people who supported Senator Biagi, like Speaker Cory Johnson and like 32BJ. Both have now endorsed my candidacy because I think they got to the core of the truth of my statement, which is this. I've been organizing phone banks for Democratic candidates like Todd Kaminsky in, I think, 2016, who flipped a Republican seat blue. I organized for Shelley Mayer to keep that seat blue. And in 2018, I organized phone banks for James Scoofus and for Anna Kaplan to flip those red seats blue. And I would add, that was actually done in collaboration with Senator Biagi's then campaign team. And that was the work to which I was referring. I was referring to the work of organizing phone banks for the Democrats who flipped those red seats blue.
Ms. Haller, any response to that?
You don't have to do a formal endorsement when you're a volunteer on a campaign. You did it in '14 as district leader actively working on Jeff Klein's campaign. The IDC so dramatically has harmed New York for the seven years that it was in power that I just don't understand how you have the word progressive three times on your campaign material, and you stood in between progressive legislation in this city for so long.
We'll give you 15 seconds to respond to that.
And on things like facts, I wasn't Democratic district leader during that primary in 2014.
In 2014, you were.
Okay. But I will say this. It is the unequivocal fact that I organized those phone banks for Democratic candidates. But honestly, I do believe, when I speak to voters, they're not looking backwards. They're looking forwards, and they want to know that they have a strong advocate in City Hall. Who is going to fight for them--
Thank you.
--as we recover from this pandemic? And who's going to fight for their quality of life? And I would say it's the person who's been doing it, and that is me.
Thank you very much. Mr. Pazmino, your chance to ask a question to one of the candidates.
All right. All right, so I mean, I'm definitely a, I'm very against money in politics. And I've just been reading a lot about money coming in from outside of the district to a lot of the various candidates. But I guess I will, all right, so I guess maybe, Jessica, what's the vested interest for the people that live outside the district to fund your campaign?
That, so Kevin, I don't think that there's a vested interest. I'm not a politician. I mean, it's funny. Carlton has been saying that in a lot of our debates, and I always feel that. I'm not a politician. I did a mid-course correction in my career in 2006 to 2008, so I have people from different kinds of careers. And when they heard that I'm now taking my career from an education perspective to a market perspective and an entrepreneur into public policy, to take everything that I know and make sure government runs that way, they all say, that's amazing. And they want to support it. The other thing that's important to remember is our matching funds program that some of us are participating in is funded by the whole city, you know, taxpayer dollars. So, and when you're a council member, you're legislating for the whole city. You represent and do constituent services for your district, and you amplify the voice of the district. But the legislation affects the whole city. And I think there are a lot of people throughout my career who are very interested, you know, in seeing my leadership move forward.
So none of the venture capital firms, they don't have anything to do with, like, they don't have anything to gain from it, I guess? They're just friends or--
I mean, if you're a climate activist and you want to know who is going to make sure that New York City hits 2030 in a way it needs to, you want to see me leading that in the council if you live on, you know, if you live anywhere in New York City. You want to see that. So that's why they're doing it. I don't know what other-- Their vested interest is the same passion that drives me to be doing, to be putting equity resilience and sustainability first.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Laura, it's up to you. You can ask a question of any candidate you'd like.
Hi, Eric.
I'm feeling so popular today.
Well, although as somebody mentioned, you are getting more airtime. So that's, I guess, the--
You know, here's a question. I know you've mentioned it a lot tonight. You've received union endorsements, so have I. I'm proud to have received CWA Unite Here, right? So prevailing wage is important. And I am proud as a candidate also to have invested the most money in the campaign right here in the Bronx. One of the things, as you speak a lot about workers' rights, is about what we've done as individuals in our work to promote workers' rights. I know you've been an employee most, you know, as a DOE. I've been able to fund and prioritize that in my own organization. As a campaign, we're running a campaign and making decisions. There was a post about a full-time job in your campaign that really wasn't meaning prevailing wages. It was barely what a rent is according, you know, is affording here, what it costs to live here. So if your commitment is to unions, how are you living by example? You know, you say you're progressive. I'm proud to be the most progressive one here. But tell me about actions, not just words, when it comes to--
Yeah, sure. So the advertising you're talking about, I believe, was for a part-time position. And if it went up, if it went up as a full-time, that was a mistake because that was a mistake in the wording. I would absolutely, and I am absolutely committed to that with any job posted, with any person I'm employing in my campaign. And in fact, we're using Unionly, Union Shops for all of our printing. And you know, I'm committed to unions. It's not just in word, it's indeed. I was a UFT chapter leader, and I'm proud to receive the endorsement of the United Federation of Teachers. And what that means is, I'm in the principal's office as a 24-year-old kid advocating to the principal, my boss, on behalf of my teachers. I'm organizing my school around issues that my teachers and the students need. It means I'm standing by workers who are unjustly fired. And it means when I talk about development and I talk about these big projects, one of the things I talk about beyond the number of units that these housing projects need to build, that these developments need to build, is things, are things like, are you using prevailing wage or union wages? And I am going to go to the city council with that lens and ask, are our workers supported? And I think it's that vision and that work that I've done, which has garnered me the support of, yes, unions like the UFT, like the Central Labor Council, like HTC, like 32BJ, like DC37, like RWDC, like the EMS workers, like the firefighters, like Local 246--
Yeah, I know, I know. So many. But then at the end of the day, the full-time field director, maybe it was a mistake, but it was out there, you know? And it was also, the least amount, you know, not a lot of money has been invested right here in our community. We need to be building our communities and showing as leaders of our campaigns what that means in action.
And, you know, and I so appreciate, you know, people make mistakes in the way they phrase things sometimes, right, Mino? And we learn from them. Okay? So, right? So I understand that. And I would never hire someone, you know, without a prevailing wage. And we have advertisements, if they're not up yet, they will be out, which live up to that value. Because that's who I am, that's the work that I've done, and that's the type of council member that I will be.
Candidates, thank you so much. This is an incredibly excellent field of candidates, and you have exemplified the best of the democratic process in participating not only in this forum, but in all the ones you've been asked. And I know I and people of the Bronx really appreciate it. Come now, time for our closing statements. Each of you will have one minute. And by prior agreement, the first one will be Mr. Eric Dinowitz, sir.
Thank you. Well, I'm Eric Dinowitz. My wife and I are raising our twin boys in our corner of the Bronx. And my life, career, and community service has been rooted here as well, whether it's teaching children with special needs in schools like JFK and Walton, or advocating for colleagues as a UFT chapter leader, advocating for accessibility at the Marshall Stop on the four train, fighting cuts to bus service throughout the Bronx, rallying with local union workers to protect jobs, reforms to make voting easy and accessible, and advocacy for seniors. My successful work has been rooted here--
30 seconds.
--together and enacting. And it's work that's recognized by leaders like Speaker Cory Johnson, Congressman Richard Torres, and Espaillat, Senator Bailey, Ruben Diaz Jr., Chantel Jackson, the United Federation of Teachers, DC37, 32BJ, the Central Labor Council, so many more. And my work rooted here in the northwest Bronx. My vision and proven ability to assemble a broad and diverse coalition of support demonstrates that I'm the candidate who will make your voice heard at City Hall and will be an advocate for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next closing statement by Jessica Haller.
Thank you. I am running for city council because the earth is on fire, and we feel it here in the Bronx. We have ignored this crisis for far too long. And if COVID teaches us anything, it shows us that the air we breathe makes us sick, affects our health, and it affects our communities of color more because of historic environmental racism. We can fix this. We just need elected leadership who understand the connections and have the fearlessness to act. I have spent my life in the private sector, the public sector, and in the not-for-profit sector implementing solutions that solve multiple problems at once. How will all of our children thrive today when schools are failing and housing is failing and the air they breathe is making them sick? They're going to thrive because we're going to stand up to the machine thinking in the same vein as Alessandra Biagi, who proudly has endorsed my campaign, like messenger Melissa Mark-Viverito. And we're going to make connections. Please join me in this vision of the city that we can be. Vote Jessica Haller on the New Leadership Line on March 23rd. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Pazmino, you have 60 seconds.
All right. So my name's Kevin Pazmino. I'm a father of four. I am a DGA, First Assistant Director. So I work in film, I'm not a politician. I manage many, many multimillion-dollar sets with union crews that, you know, range in sizes from, you know, 90 to 200 with extras. And, you know, it could be up to 1,000 people in situations that involve stunts. And so it's a very high accountability, you know, live fire on public streets and whatnot.
30 seconds.
So, you know, in a very high accountability industry. So, you know, if you're a Republican or conservative, vote for me and only me because I'm the only candidate out here that, you know, has your same moral or political views. If you're a Blue Dog Democrat, you know, vote for me. I'm a conservative father with, you know, but I lead from the heart. I run a tight ship, but I lead from the heart and a place of love. If you're progressives, then just, you know, watch who's funding your candidates. De mi gente, you know, soy un primera generación americano. Mis mamás de Colombia, mis papás de Ecuador. Yo no quiero dejar el trabajo cuando tengo 17 años. Lo estoy haciendo para la familia mía, la familia suya, and the families of District 11.
Thank you very much. And the next closing statement will be from you, Mino Laura.
My name is Mino Laura. I'm an educator, an activist, and executive director of an organization serving 1,000 kids a year. I brought students up to Albany to fight for student funding. I've advocated with Senator Schumer for COVID relief. I've partnered with the governor's office for equity and vaccinations. When summer youth unemployment was cut last year, I brought together 14 groups and we recreated a free summer camp for 200 kids. These are the battles we need to keep fighting until we win every single one of them. In this race for city council, I'm proud to be endorsed by the Working Families Party, CWA, Senator Gustavo Rivera, Senator Biagi. I'm proud to have kept my programs for free and my staff employed. And, y que soy la única mujer latina, la primera inmigrante, and the only woman of color in this race. I am ready to work with you, build coalition for the progressive city that allows all of us to live with dignity, safety, and joy.
Thank you very much. Mr. Berkeley, one minute for you, sir.
My name is Carlton Berkeley. I've been living in Wakefield for close to 30 years. I'm a retired New York City detective. I have fought the police department when it comes to racism. I'm a grassroots type of guy, all right? When, I've also changed the law, CPL 240, which now that you see that people are coming home from doing time 20 and 30 years for a crime that they didn't commit, all right? I just changed that law, and it took us, it took me eight years to do it. I'm a grassroots guy. But whether we're fighting for shelters, whether we're fighting racism in our schools, whether we're fighting the NITRA issues, because NITRA is a mess, all right? People living in NITRA shouldn't be living under those conditions. Whether it's police brutality, whatever it is, I have been on the ground. I am the type of person that I walk with the people. I breathe with the people. I'm not the type of guy that sits behind a desk, all right? I'm the type of guy that's out there with the people at all times. Please vote for me on March the 23rd. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the final word of this entire program will go to you, Dan Paternak, and you'll have 60 seconds.
Thanks, Gary. My name is Dan Paternak, candidate for city council. I was born and raised in the Bronx. I grew up in the working neighborhood of Kingsbridge. I went to PS95, JHS143, and Fordham Prep. I've been on Bronx Community Board Eight for 12 years. I ran the city agency for three years, and I've been the vice chair of the Land Use Committee for four years. I'm the only candidate who's run a city agency. I'm the only candidate who is an attorney for what is a legislative and government job. One thing about me that everybody knows is how much I work. And I am up early each morning. I have community meetings at 7:00 AM on the streets with Con Edison, and I'm on the phone at 10:00 PM. I am a hard worker, and I will bring that to the city council. I am grateful to everyone who has worked with me in this campaign, my endorsements, former Assemblyman Michael Blake, Bill Samuels, former candidate Dean L. Fenn, the Northwest Bronx Dems, and most recently, Local 46, the Metallic Latherers, and Iron Workers Union. I am grateful to all the help that they have given me. And please reach out to me. You can get me at votedanp.com. Thanks so much, Gary.
Candidates, thank you so much for your participation tonight. You have exemplified the best of the democratic process. I know you have participated in many of these forums, and we appreciate you doing that and, of course, being with us this evening. And while you might not agree on everything, I know you will agree with me that every eligible voter should come out and vote on March 23rd.